Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. Seeing none, I would just like to say this is the last meeting of this school committee, although we'll all be back next year, but I would just like to, as I was driving over here, I was thinking about the last two years and all that has been accomplished in the Gloucester school system. We've opened a new school, we've got a new roof on the high school, we have started the process of building another elementary school, and we've, you know, the schools are now Level 2 district, and so we have a lot to be proud here of, and I'm very happy having worked with all of you to get there. Recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, we have an opportunity to congratulate the Gloucester High School cheerleaders for another exceptional season. I've got a nice little blurb here from the athletic director, and quit not to be here tonight, void of which she would have loved to have been here, but I'd like to breathe that and then congratulate our cheerleading team. The Gloucester High School cheerleading team is led by fourth-year head coach Erica Mitchell and assistants Nicole Correia and Erica Chau. Team captains are Jillian Gross, Vanessa Rolosi, and Talia Sanfilippo. The team went undefeated in regular season competition and earned the status of Northeastern Conference Grand Champions at Winthrop High School this fall. Given the fall and winter cheerleading seasons, this marked the fifth time in Coach Mitchell's tenure at GHS that the team was named NEC Grand Champions. In competition at Lowell High School, the squad captured the regional championship for the first time. The team went on to become Massachusetts State Champions in competition at Worcester State University on November the 19th. This is Gloucester's first state championship since 2010. The team is most appreciative of their fellow student athletes, parents, and fans who devote hours out of their way to support the team and witness their three-minute winning performance. The team earned the right to defend their national title on March 30th and March 31st in Orlando, Florida. So again, absolute outstanding performance, great guidance, excellent execution, and support for our athletic teams is obviously second to none. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would the captain shake their hand? Yeah, we're gonna shake. Congratulations. 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 You're welcome. Congratulations. 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 You're welcome. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Would Coach like to say anything?
Throw me off. No, thank you for having us.
Okay, we really appreciate, and it's really wonderful that you exceeded your expectations. Unless you did, did you expect to win?
Well, this was our goal. This was our goal, so we did it.
So now you have a new goal, because you go into the Nationals, right?
Yes.
And when does that happen?
Um, not until March. So you have to win one more state championship again, and then we can go to Nationals. But we're already going to Nationals, but it'd be nice to win the second state title. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You make us very proud. Do we have other recognitions?
I'm gonna give the such, so you know what I'm talking about. So I would like to recognize the Gloucester High School students and staff that participated in some training regarding mental health. This IGL was in the Globe and not in the Gloucester Daily Times, and that's very unfortunate, because there's so much good going on in that school, and I just wanted to highlight a little bit that this is a program, it's called Youth Mental Health First Aid Kit Certification Training. It's an eight-hour course that students and staff were involved in, and as we all know, mental health and substance abuse are a very important topic and concerns amongst students, and we're actually gonna hear a little bit about the concerns in a survey that we're gonna get some information on in a little while. But I was just very impressed that students were involved in this level of discussion and role-playing, and I'm very proud that our students want to get involved in these kind of issues and are there to help students in need, which there are many throughout the school. So, great recognition, and thank you to all involved. It was a great, great program.
Anything else? I'd just like to recognize the people that turned out at the city council meeting last night to support the bond issue for the feasibility study for the new school for East Gloucester and Vex. We had 36 people who stood up and said they were in favor of it. There was nobody that was opposed, but we also had a number of parents who got up and spoke, and notably, we had three West Parish parents who came and expounded on what a beautiful school they had, but how they wished every student in Gloucester had the same opportunities. So that was a very, very good start to this process. Anything else? We'll move on to our Student Advisory Council.
So it's just me tonight. So I'm Samantha Gross, I'm the Chair of the Student Council Executive Board. Not much has really changed, but from the last meeting, well, the blood drive is this Friday. Once again, you have to be at least 16 to donate, you have to be 18 to go without parent's permission, and you have to have parents sign forms if you're 16, 17. We also have winter sports day started. As far as I know, some sports have like scrimmage games. I know the swim team just had a meet last night, and I think yesterday, I believe, we had students go to their homerooms to take a survey about the environment and the culture of Gloucester High School, and besides that, that was our, that's how we are, as you know.
Any questions?
What kind of questions were you asked on the survey?
Just general questions, like how, like, kind of like relationships with like teachers, like are they helping you out, are they doing what they need to help you succeed? They've also been asking about the student body and how they have all been, like, is everyone getting along, and like what's been happening around the school? They're just very general questions.
Can I take a step further? What was the reaction by students to get a survey like that? Do you think students were very involved in it and answering questions?
I believe everyone gave their opinion of how, I think everyone's different with their opinions, so I can't really speak for everyone, but for me, I believe this really benefited the environment of GHS, and if they look over these answers and see everyone's opinions, they could help use those answers to better the school.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, and as always, you're welcome to stay. Move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to add from the consent agenda? There is one typo. It's correct on the backup, but the girls JV hockey team will be going to Broadchester, New Hampshire, not New York.
I got that too.
To play golf. So it's correct on the backup, on the form, it's just a typo.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. I propose a unanimous. And we're gonna move on to our deliberations on educational issues, the Tennessee attendance report, and we're gonna start with our youth risk behavior survey, and Anne Marie Jordan, our wellness coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'd like to present to you some of the findings from our biannual youth risk behavior survey, student survey, that we administer at the middle school and the high school every other year. We've been giving this, administering this survey for quite a few years now, which is wonderful, because we have some, we are able to look at trends over a long period of time, which is terrific. We were, we did give this survey in 2017, in March of 2017. Next slide. The survey was given by, we work and we have for a long time with the Gloucester Health Department, as well as the Healthy Gloucester Collaborative in administering the survey, and we are able to, with our collaboration, to use the services of a research company called Social Science Research and Evaluation, and in fact, they've been with us since the early 2000s, working on this survey with us. They help us to identify any edits we want to make to the survey from year to year, help us to analyze, they analyze all of the data and provide us with all of the materials so that we can distribute the information, and also to be able to use the survey data as well. They are, thank you. Again, it was given in March to grades six through 12. The middle school survey is actually a modified survey of the high school survey, so there aren't quite as many questions. We ask questions, background information such as gender, age, grade level. We ask students about their views and attitudes towards alcohol, tobacco, and the drugs, as well as other health-related issues such as violence and safety, mental health and physical health. Next slide. So, caveats, can we trust this data? We get this question every year. This survey is based on, although it's tailored towards Gloucester, we call it the Gloucester Student Health Survey, it is primarily based on the Centers for Disease Control's Youth Risk Behavior surveys, which is an evidence-based, valid survey tool that is used nationwide. We also know that research shows that if students, anonymous surveys work well, if students know that it is voluntary, and that it's, everything that they answer is confidential, and as long as we create that and support that criteria, then the research shows that students answer honestly. And then we also look at, well, I don't personally, but that's why we use a research company, they look at these surveys to look for frivolous answers. It is designed so that they can compare answers to specific questions, they can find some frivolous answers on how children, students answer. And these results are generalized only to students who are present, so we only can make determinations about what children, young people are saying who are taking the survey. This is not generalized, we don't, aren't able to get answers from children who are absent, chronically absent, who have dropped out of school, who aren't attending school. So this is, this is information related to students who are there on that day. And we are able to, as I said a few minutes ago, able to look at trends in Gloucester over a period of time, which is great valuable information for us to have in general, as well as to help us to get a sense of how well our programs and our collaborations with our community partners are doing with helping support students and making healthy decisions. We can compare this data, we don't compare community to community, there are differences among communities, they use different surveys, but we are able to compare this survey data to the Massachusetts Youth Risk Behavior Survey Administration. With a slight caveat, we are a little bit off schedule, so when we compare data, and you'll see some of the data here, we're looking at data that's a little bit older from Massachusetts, so it's not, we're not comparing data from exactly the same time in the state and local. We want to really reinforce it, although we survey students, young people, this is, these are issues that are related to lots of people, including adults, and this is, these are, although we do this in the school, this is not directly related to the schools, it's, we just have the capture audience. So it gives us community information, we use the schools as a caveat to gather that information. So, next slide. I'm just going to go through a few slides and tables to show you some of the data that we have, we've been able to see through the latest administration. You do have a summary of the survey data in your packet, which gives a little bit more information with some greater topics, and I'll talk about to them. But alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, the next slide. Some current substance use, this is current use is defined in the survey as use within the last 30 days prior to the survey. So when students are asked this question, it's regarding their behavior regarding the last 30 days. Alcohol is the most common used substance, that is, with 3% of Gloucester middle school students and 42% of high school students reporting that they had consumed alcohol in the last 30 days. I don't show you this, a slide that shows from grade to grade, but as most people would assume, you see a steady progression up on all of the substances from sixth grade up to 12th grade. I can show that slide, because I assume most people know that. 29% of high school students reported binge drinking in the same 30-day time period. We give a definition of binge drinking on the survey, and that is having consumed five or more drinks within a short period of time. We also ask questions now about electronic tobacco. As you can see, a great statistic is cigarettes, and cigarette use in that period is small. Historically, it's the lowest level. Gloucester is not unlike other communities, but it's a terrific statistic to see. We do get concerned as do other communities about electronic tobacco, those are e-cigarettes, I don't know all of the names, but we do put that on the survey, so e-pipes, vaping, vape pipes, e-huckas, hookah pens, et cetera.
Uka.
Uka. Sorry. And then the high school rate of current marijuana use, which is the next, next to alcohol, the next highly-used substance, was 35%, which is much higher, as you can see, from cigarettes, which is at 5%. Next slide. This shows some of our trend data, and as you can see, it's very hard to read, it is in your packet. I'd like to just point out, again, talking about the cigarette use, of current use, when we first started giving this in 2007, the rate was 27%, or now, where students are reporting 5%. Electronic tobacco, this is the first time we've been gathering this data, so we don't have past data. Alcohol trends have been also going down, however, we did see a slight uptick this year from 39% to 42%, against a slight uptick on binge drinking from 25 to 29, and a slight uptick in marijuana use from 31 to 35%. However, the trends are still downward, we would have to look at the next administration of the survey to see if this were a continuing problem, or just a blip for this current administration. We're not that concerned about the data, since it's not something that is extremely hot, that hasn't changed significantly. And as you can see, the other drugs, cocaine, ecstasy, heroin, methamphetamines, those numbers are quite a bit lower, and they have, there are no lips on those substances as well. Next slide. Massachusetts data, proportional levels of current substance use rates for Gloucester High School students are similar, they mirror statewide data, so with greater reported use of alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana, and less use of other illegal drugs. Comparative data is, with the middle school data, is not available in Massachusetts. For statewide data, it is possible for us to make limited comparisons with a survey tool that's used by the Mass Department of Public Health, which is called the Massachusetts Youth Health Survey Data. That comparison is not as good as the high school comparison data. Next slide. This selected issue is related to substance use. The next slide. I think this is an important slide to look at, it's very busy, and I apologize, but I will explain why I wanted to show this slide. As you know, over the past couple of years, as required by the state Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we have updated our alcohol and other drug prevention policies, and simultaneously, we have purchased and put training into having our middle and high school health teachers trained in this, the newest curriculum, which is called Life Skills Training. Part of that curriculum is helping, is addressing issues around perceived risk of substance use, because what the research has shown is that if, when young people feel that there is a perceived risk of using a substance, they are less likely to use that substance. So if we look at, so respondents, the students were asked to assess their perception of harm of these different substances, and that could be physical, or in other ways, emotional, behavioral, and this chart displays the percentage of respondents in each grade who reported that there was either a moderate risk or a high risk of each of the listed. So for regular cigarette use, a non-medical use of prescription drugs, students responded that a consistent high risk of those substances. By contrast, use of both electronic tobacco products and marijuana were perceived as less risky, with the percentage of respondents perceiving risk declining across grades. So I think that when we think about our newest health curriculum, this will hopefully help in these perception issues. So if this, the curriculum is, is used over a period of years, then theoretically, students are going to hopefully understand that there is a higher risk of marijuana use and e-cigarette use, in theory. So we could potentially look at this data in a few years and see if we've had a positive impact on perception of risk on, in these areas. Next slide. I know it's busy. Safety and mental health, next slide. So 37% of Gloucester middle school students and 23% of high schoolers reported that they had been bullied in school in the 12 months prior to the survey, compared to 23% of middle schoolers and 16% of high schoolers who were bullied when they were not in school. As you can see, those numbers have gone down over a period of, over, oh, it's not in this slide. Yes, it is. So bullied, bullied in schools, 48% reported in 2007 that they were bullied in school. Currently, 37% at middle school report that they've been bullied in school. So that number has gone down, as have the high school numbers. They've actually stayed relatively steady. Bulled electronically, as we discussed last time, that has gone up over time with increased use of, use of social media. And then saw someone else bullied in school, that number has stayed, that has gone down, it stayed comparatively the same for 2015. This slide I put in, again, it's busy, I apologize. This shows what students reported they did when they saw someone else being bullied in school in 12 months prior to the survey. These are, so in the second one, didn't do anything, just saw it happen. As you can see, those numbers have gone down, so children reporting that they haven't done anything have gone down. Students though, that have reported that they have done something, tried to do something to stop, those numbers have gone up, from 29% to 44% at middle school, and 29% to 36% in high school. And those who said that they told a teacher, counselor, or another adult, those numbers have gone up as well too, from 9% to 22% at middle school, stayed relatively the same in high school from 6% to 5%. Next slide. So as many of you, as you know, we have in the last several years concentrated around social-emotional learning and social-emotional health in our classrooms at the elementary, middle, and the high school level. So I think it's important to look for a moment at the, at the questions that we ask regarding depression and self-harm. We do ask questions regarding reported depression, whether they've hurt themselves on purpose, whether they seriously considered suicide, whether they've made a plan to commit suicide, and whether they've attempted suicide. Available high school trend data reveals slight but consistent decreases in these issues in 2017, with rates remaining largely consistent over time. In contrast, rates among middle school students increased overall between 2015 and 2017, often with reported depression 14% in 2015 and 18% in 2017. In general, the percentage of respondents who reported each of these mental health concerns tended to increase in the middle school years, and then vary throughout the high school grades. 2017 Gloucester female respondents were more likely than males to report these issues, depression, hurt self on purpose, seriously considering suicide, planning to commit suicide, and attempting suicide. Next slide. I'd like to just end on, because I think that it's important when we talk about some of the programs that we've been implementing, research does show that if young people have a trusted adult that they can talk to, they are at an advantage to be able to address issues that they're having. And if we think about our programs that we're implementing, even in the young grades, second step, and up to middle and high school, when we talk about the PBIS program, the sales program at the middle school, if we, these are programs that really provide us the opportunity, not only to educate young people, but to provide them an opportunity to have a trusted adult, feel that they have a trusted adult that they can talk to. These are research-based programs, they're not programs that are just providing information to students, but creating an environment that students feel that they are safe and have someone that they can trust in school. So if we look at this data, we see that over the years, students have reported that more often that they have school adults in their life that they feel that they can confide and talk to if they have an issue. So from, at middle school, in 2007, 66% of students reported that they had a trusted adult, school adult that they could talk to this last administration. This last administration, that number went up to seventy-five percent. And at the high school, fifty-eight percent in two thousand and seven reported that they have a trusted adult in the school that they could speak to. This past administration, seventy-seven percent reported there was a trusted adult at school that they could talk to. I think that's, those are great numbers, and I think that we can continue with our programming to address that, in addition to providing young people with education and skill sets to be able to make that good decisions regarding their health and how they can protect their health. So, any questions?
First, I just want to thank you for presenting the data. While the trends are good, the information is always sad to hear, but I'm glad we're talking about it. So on the bullying, has there been any look into as far as kids reporting bullying through the survey, but what's actually been reported? In other words, if you have a percentage of students that feel that they're being bullied, does that coincide closely with the amount of cases that have been reported to a trusted adult and then addressed?
That's a really difficult thing to figure out. Well, we do report and we're required to report, reported incidents, incidents of bullying in school, and we do that, and we report that to the state. Not always, though, do we, do students report that they've been bullied. Again, going back to the trusted adult piece, if students have some, and even going back to the, there was a question there when we asked whether they felt that they had someone in school, or would they have talked to someone in school about, of incidental bullying that they witnessed. That, that number has been going up slightly, and if we can continue that trend, then our, those two numbers will look more similar. So in addition to wanting to prevent bullying, we also want to make sure that students have access to adults so that they can report it, if it's not something that they can or want to stop directly.
Thank you. And my second question is the self-hurting, twelve and seventeen percent to middle school and high school. What, if any, is the school's role to try to identify these children and?
That's a great question. So much of that is related to depression, and part of the things that we've learned over the years, and we've done this through a variety of programs, through the health programs as well as through the adjustment counseling programs, we try to provide, we try to create environments where we can identify depression with students. So their, the nurse's office, for instance, they are administering the ESPORE survey, which is a general depression screening tool. They administer it to students. If they are concerned, they will follow up with the students. Because being able to identify depression is the best way to be able to identify potential self-harm. Not everyone who's depressed is suicidal or may attempt to harm themselves, however, they do find that, the research shows very definitively that people who do attempt to harm themselves or harm themselves, there is a very high incidence of depression. So being able to identify that and then support students who have identified as being depressed is our best way of being able to impact those numbers.
So through professional development or something, there's training for teachers to say, you know, there might be more bruises on someone than usual, or a cut, a couple cuts or something?
Yes.
Those type of things, or?
Yeah. Or if, if someone comes down to the nurse's office and they might be complaining about a stomach ache, but then they keep coming down. The nurses have been trained to be able to ask probing questions, they know that it's just not a stomach ache. And so to be able to, again, create that environment, not only in the classroom, but in the adjustment counselor's office, in the guidance office, in the nurse's office, where we can ask students questions to help support them and just speaking to trusted adults, so.
Thank you.
Yours.
I find the trend on the, the view of how harmful marijuana is going down, and that's a concern, a big concern.
It is, and I'm hoping that with the increased attention that we're, we have in our classrooms, especially at the, especially at the middle school, but also at the high school as well too, that that can help impact that. If we give students good information about the realities of marijuana use, then hopefully they will understand the perception, the true perception of harm, the true incidence of harm of marijuana.
Any other questions? Swishy, do you want to add something to?
No.
You're away with the audience around you now.
Circulation, Ellen.
Just, Henry, can we get that PowerPoint sent to us?
Yes, absolutely.
That intro, we have the other information in there. And did we see the survey?
No, but I can give you a copy of that.
Oh, good.
There.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you very much. Okay. It's that time of year again. Budget development guidelines and schedule. Mr. LaFleur.
Thank you. So our fiscal nineteen budget process began in the October in the business office, and it's currently with the department heads and principals. What we've done to date is collected all anticipated lane changes from all of the teachers. If you remember, that was added to the bargain agreement. Thank you very much. We did get quite a response, which we had to turn around and vet a lot of those. I don't know if we were clear enough, the way we captured the data via the website, but we made a lot of phone calls to teachers and emails and embedded that out. So that's great, it's not included. It's, it's been a problem for quite some time here. We've set all the staff to the next step on salary schedules, and we have a bargaining agreement, so that's terrific. I incorporated all the staff retirements we know of. Right now, it's light compared to the last two years. This is my third budget season here. We've collected all the data on leases and contracts that extended into fiscal nineteen, cop years of the equipment we do lease. I don't know if all of you are aware, we're testing the waters with outsourcing transportation. We did go out to bid, the bids have come back, but we're in the middle of analyzing that. Either way, we have to go back out to bid for a new fleet. So there's, there's some comparison to be done over the next few months to see what will be the most economical. So taking all that, we've provided draft documents to the principals and department heads. Instead, starting from a blank sheet, I provided them with a budget report that lists out every individual staff member, their current, or their expected salary, including a lane change if it's on there. Sorry. I see faces and eyes going here, sorry. So that's all been provided to them. We've provided the fiscal eighteen budget with all the notes and all the little subcategories and everything to them, so I expect this budget season is going to be very easy for them. It's just a matter of making sure it's what they still want, and it'll remind them of the items that were included in a supplies account or testing or what have you. So actually, you have received the first one back since we've been sitting here tonight. So that, all of that is due back to me by close of business Friday. From there, we will recollect this whole thing into a master budget. The superintendent and I will sit down, probably over the Christmas break, start rotating the principals and department heads in here. If they have additional requests, we'll talk that through and track those separately. So from there, we've set the date, this week, last week, January sixteenth and seventeenth, the doesn't, doesn't, budget and finance will meet with all the principals and all the department heads like we did last year. And I've also provided you with a, a rough timeline at the bottom of the document, and the agenda, as we don't have the dates, so we reached out to the city and they're nowhere near setting the actual dates for this, so I just gave you a rough expected timeline. Questions? Concerns?
I think one of the things that we talked about a lot is, that we'd like to look at in this next budget season is, is the impact of fees on bus fees and what, what that may mean if we were to change that structure. So if we could, in the course of putting up all the other bus stuff that you're doing, if we could also get an analysis of?
Actually, on the agenda next Wednesday for?
Next BNF, if it's on, that's what was tabled.
Yeah. So we'll pull the data on, on what we've collected for bus pass for, in the last four or five years.
Anything else?
You mentioned that they were, the power hats were instructed, it's a lot of service.
A lot of service budgets.
We have, I, have we gotten any indication besides the usual doom and gloom from the administration as to where they're headed this year?
I have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time. So we hear that teachers buy their own supplies for their classroom. And I'm wondering if part of developing the budget, there can be a question to someone, how much, how much are teachers spending? And what is, what's the trends on teachers buying supplies for classrooms? And why they feel they have to as opposed to asking them through the budget?
We could do a survey.
Just curious.
And what kind of supplies?
Right. Like why, I mean, in this day and age, when we're doing budgets the way we are, to hear that teachers are buying their own supplies makes me wonder why, is it, why isn't it being asked for as part of curriculum and regular budget processes?
We can ask. The current budget is equalized by classroom, so if we have disparity between the schools, that's been rectified, so hopefully.
No, 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 I'm not getting to that. I'm just wondering why teachers still feel the need to buy supplies as opposed to, in other words, are they asking for more money in their supply budget and it's being cut? Or are they going above and beyond what is usually used in the classroom? Like, I just, I'm curious to know if they're buying them still and what the reasoning is behind it.
We can ask.
Anything else? Thank you very much. And now we, at our next meeting in January, we will be doing the valuation of the superintendent. We have all received electronically the evidence, it's in a Google Docs format. If anybody has trouble accessing that, you should let somebody know. You want to go over just sort of the?
Sure, we can do that briefly. It's, it's been a year, so it's, it's hard to habituate when you want to do something once a year, but first couple of pages are actually, that's the information that you're going to be filling out last, because that is the result of all the other review and analysis that you do. So the first step is to assess the progress toward the goals, and those are the goals that were first established in January at the beginning of this year. This professional practice goal, the student learning goal, and the three district improvement goals, one in science, elementary science, one increasing rigor, particularly in ELA at the middle school, and the development of the understanding by design slash inquiry units taking place at the high school. And there is abundant evidence in, for each of those five particular goals, that you have an opportunity to review. Step two on the first page is the overall assessment of the four standards. And the four standards are addressed in the nineteen rubrics, which are in the bottom of the rest of this document. So you'll be reading through, as you've done before, those particular nineteen rubrics. And each standard, as you go through the document, each standard asks for a rating, and then you take those and you bring them up here and make your assumptive rating based upon those descriptions and explanations. Taking the first page all together, then, just like on an exam, did somebody get an A, an A minus, a B, or B plus, there's step three, which is to rate the overall assumative performance based upon the five SMART goals and the evidence, and based upon the nineteen rubrics and the descriptions slash explanations that are given in reference to each of those as well. Just to, these are the five professional, the, the five goals for which there's evidence, and you'll be grading each one of those, then doing it in a assumative fashion up top. And then we go into each of those already mentioned, nineteen different rubrics that we had agreed upon about three or four years ago with the explanations. At the end of each standard, there is a, a grade for that particular standard that you can also list as well. So that's, that's the page, that's the document that you'll be doing your work on. Then we go to a summary of the, of the goals. Let's make it a little bigger. This was the document that you had received last January, and it has the goals as well as the action steps, and then it also has the response. And this happens to be the professional practice goal, and there's a code, PPG, professional practice goal one point O. There's a log, because I visited the schools throughout the course of the year and kept a log, if you will, of the activities at the various meetings that I attended. Things get a little thicker in terms of evidence as we move into the other goals. Again, here's the goal, the action steps, the articulated response, and just a listing of the types of evidence that you'll see in some of the other files. SG stands for student growth goal, and there's a one point one, a one point O, a one point one, one point two, one point three, et cetera, and, and so on and so forth. So those are the five SMART goals, and just a listing of the evidence by, by code that you have an opportunity to observe. And then we begin, the actual evidence itself is, begins with the professional practice goal. And here you can see, the, this is the goal, and here's the supporting evidence. So this is a repeat of what you saw in the previous document. The table of contents, just like the school committee packets, has a table of contents. So you click on that, and that's, that's a listing of the log of the visitations to the various schools. If we go to, one more example, if we go to, let's say, the, the new science program. So this would be district SMART goal one, to repeat. Here is the, here's the goal, here are the action steps, the responses on the other document, here is the supporting evidence, notes from the, the prior assistant principal about the process, part two notes from, it was actually three, a teacher workshop, and the Gloucester Science rollout of PD. If you wanted to see the science rollout, you could just click on that, and it'll take you right to it. So that's how it's organized, it's been shared, as Mr. Pope has mentioned. If you have any issues not being able to access it, please let us know, and we'll make sure that we resend and reshare.
And as far as the timeline goes, we will be, the processes that you'll submit your individual evaluations to me, and I will compile a summative evaluation, which will be presented on the thirteenth? Tenth of January.
When do you want?
So I want them a week before that, I want them by the third of January.
What day is that?
It's Wednesday, January third.
So you'll get everything on Sunday the seventh?
Exactly. Okay, we have till the seventh. I know.
Electronically too, I don't, I don't have to remind this group, but in the past, we did have one counselor, and they gave it to me long, pretty much.
But it was good.
It was good.
But it was good.
Yes. Which has a string in its office. Anything else on the, on the process, valuation process? And we shall move on to this moment that we've all been waiting for, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as always. Item number one has to do with what is being called an interim passive standard on F-CAS for the classes of two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Grades three through eight have already administered the next
Grades three through eight have already administered the next generation MCAS, grade 10 has not. I think the state has been cautious about that because it is the competency determination being the basis for graduation. And they are extending that caution just a little bit more by creating interim standard. What that means is they will be administering the next generation MCAS in the spring of 2019. But rather than using particular standards based upon that, they're going to use the existing standards and the existing cutoff points based upon the traditional, what's called the legacy MCAS. So if the expectation for the next generation MCAS, if the threshold for whatever is here, they'll be using an interim standard because they've not established the database to really understand where the cuts in the different areas of qualification should be. So it's a, it's a recognition that this is a project that is in progress. And until they have fully collected enough information, enough data to properly calibrate it, they're going to continue to rely on the thresholds that exist while administering the new test and the demands of that particular test. Item number two has to do with a bill that recently passed the House, the State Legislature, H 4032, in the nature of bilingual programs. And what this legislation is actually saying is with oversight and governance, there is increased opportunity to be more flexible in the types of ELL programs that districts are administering. Translated, I think that probably means that if there was a move more toward teaching in the native language as opposed to a full 100% inversion in English, that with, again, state oversight, they're willing to allow school districts to do that. I don't know that we're in any position to begin to think about reevaluating where our ELL program should be or how it should be moving. But it's, considering that the legislation now exists, it's something that we'll be keeping in mind and studying in order to ensure that we maximize the ways in which we can help our ELL students access the curriculum. Item number three is West Parish and the city council's ordinance and administration meeting on Monday, December the fourth, to discuss the traffic issue around West Parish. The discussion was tabled in order so that the subcommittee could modify, revamp the original motion that was placed before them. The language that we are now recommending, in essence, asks that between the 2:45, 3 o'clock dismissal until 3:15, that from when, from leaving the West Parish school up towards Essex Avenue, that's about 245 feet, I must say square feet, or something like that. And that, that would be a one-way. Part of the issue at, at West Parish is during crunch time, if there are cars coming off of Essex Avenue from either side, while cars are coming out, while cars are parking, while there's live drive and pickup, it really complicates matters. And it may require us to hire a bus, a crossing guard in time of position. We may have to ask the DPW to provide us with some sort of perhaps a post, send it chain with something for good identification so cars don't come through it. But in essence, the request from the school department is for that half hour at dismissal to prevent that one-way from happening. And as we also know from what we've been observing, the other major obstacle, which this will also help to, to reduce, is the fact that there are parents that pick up their children, but they park their cars, go get their children, and then go to, to bring them back to the cars again. On Concord Street in particular, that also needs to be eliminated. All pickup needs to be live pickup with parents in cars. And between the space and the runaround and a little bit of room on Concord Street, it's been our observation, the observation of others, that if it's flowing and if everybody's moving, it really shouldn't be too much of a problem.
So no more walkers than aren't walkers?
Well, the number of walkers that are walkers is, is pretty low.
Right.
It's quite low.
That everybody else was claiming that kid was a walker, but they were a pickup.
Correct.
I noticed.
Correct.
I guess my only concern with our suggested arranged, you know, language is the early release dates. How would anybody know? How would the neighbors know?
That the, it's going to be shut off at that time?
Right, you know, on a regular school day, I think, if you live in the area, you would start getting knowledgeable and plan around it a little better.
So some, so what you're suggesting is that the neighbors need some form of notification? Many of them may not have children in school, let alone at West Parish. And we need to come up with a plan so that we notify them. I think we can send out a calendar earlier in the year, but I think as these, as these dates approach, that we should make other efforts to contact them as well.
Yeah, it, it's, it'll be the neighbors, but also it'll impact people that just use that route to go from West Gloucester to downtown, to, 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 that aren't necessarily neighbors. So we need to think about a way of getting the word out beyond the neighbors.
Or making sure signage is pretty bright.
Yeah.
Easy to see in those days.
Because that's, I mean, the neighbors actually, it, it, you know, it only affects two houses in the neighborhood that are actually in that 285 feet. It would affect them if they were coming home and coming down Essex Avenue and wanted to drive down. Joel?
Two quick thoughts now. One is, although I appreciate what Kathy's saying, I mean, I don't know how many times a week I go to turn down a street I think I can drive down, and there's a DPW and something's happening, you know? The fact of the matter is, if you're coming to take the ride to Concord and it happens to be closed at 11:15 for a half day, you scoot down to 14, come around 13, it added 90 seconds to your life, but, you know, it happens all over Gloucester all the time. The second thing is, I'm curious to know whether or not this still is intended to be sort of a, the immediate but temporary fix, and whether we're going to still, you know, look for maybe some more long-term solutions that involve traffic flow change, but involve, you know, site rework. I think it'd be important to, as this goes forward, remind people that this is just, we have to solve the problem now, this is the quickest way to solve the problem now.
Right.
There's more to be done on the long term.
I, I've had a conversation with Katie Loughler at NSBA about whether we can reopen the Biggie Bank for West Parish to see if we can bring back, the design people to relook at the traffic flow. And she didn't know the answer, and she said she would get back to me, but that hasn't happened yet.
Can we hire a specific traffic consultant?
Well, we could, it's just a question of whether we can use the money.
And I know that Council, we know that Council Nolan has, is very much interested in looking to see if we can establish parking for those picking up their children with equal but opposite access in and out and whatever else. So there is, there is interest and consideration in the long-term strategy as well.
Yes, this, but to answer the question you asked, this, this is being presented. I think when we, at O and A, we talked about doing it for the rest, you know, put this in place for the rest of this year, not for current.
But also to, to that point, I think it's on us to make sure this keeps rising to the top because the superintendent and staff continually have things dumped over, on top of these things. So I think that, you know, we need to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball here.
But you know, the other option, the possibility is that this just solves the problem, you know, and that people adapt to it, too.
That would be nice. It helps East Gloucester if it stays permanent.
Anyway, moving on.
Item number four has to do with just making the school committee aware of Title One and potential reallocation of funds. This year, we received around $520,000 of our Title One entitlement grant. And this is a, an intervention, the, the use of this money is for interventions. And the money is allocated based upon percentages of low income. So you have a chart, and you can see that veterans and the preschool and the Beeman are our top three in terms of the percentage of low-income slash economically disadvantaged students. But there's been some shifting around. East Gloucester prior to this year was in the fourth slot. West Parish has now moved ahead of them, as, and Plum Cove is, is barely behind East Gloucester. East Gloucester cannot be funded if we haven't provided the same or actually slightly more funding for West Parish. We have introduced tutors this year and so on, but we're now in a situation where we have to look at all five of our schools with respect to allocations, ensuring that schools with the highest amount of low income and with the most need don't experience a severe reduction in services. And at the same time, ensuring that there is a hierarchical allocation of funds that is consistent with the shift that we have in the overall numbers of percentages. We have a number of them on a couple of occasions, and we've learned how to scratch our heads over this particular situation, but we'll continue to work at it and come up with as equitable a solution consistent with the requirements of Title Ones we possibly can.
I just, these numbers are considerably higher than they have been in the past. I'm just wondering if there's an explanation for that.
I think that, I think the distinction is that Title One still uses a designation called low income, whereas the state, when it measures, it uses the designation economically disadvantaged, which only considers students who have some association with some sort of social service funding. What's it called, SNAP, or any of these other particular, and I think that's the difference between the two. But the numbers are up there.
What is the, is there a cutoff at a school that gets funding, a percentage cutoff, or, you know, what may create a Title One school?
Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't know what the bottom threshold is, but it is based upon, strictly based upon low-income figures. And I don't know if, well, if it's, no, I don't want to mention the averages.
This is not based on free and reduced lunch, or it is, or it isn't, or?
Yeah, it is a part, yes.
There's not certain what different data they would use, I think they're reviewing the same data.
I can have Dr. Goldwin as our Title One coordinator, and if you are interested in more of the particulars, I'd be glad to invite her here next time.
Do we get our money by our percentages of children that are in it, is that, they count heads?
Yeah, I, I, my recollection is that there's a certain percentage that you have to have in a particular school.
In order to get certain use?
Well, no, then you need to spend money, you get-
Right.
You get money by the district, but it gets divvied up. You get, you have to provide services in, in schools that have a certain percentage. But I just, just as far as the percentage goes, if you look at the state numbers for 2016, which is the newest ones they have, that's as, has, it's 50% economically disadvantaged, whereas we're looking at 80% here. It's a huge difference.
I don't on the current one, I don't know if it's going to change. Get back to on that. I know these are the figures that were presented to us by Dr. Goldwin. These are the figures that she is sharing in reciprocal fashion with the state, so these are the accepted numbers. I can get a clearer definition for you as to what these represent.
It'd be nice to know who generate, whether the state generates this, this count, or whether it's generated locally.
Again, the problem for us remains that schools are increasing the number of low-income students, shifting the percentages by schools, and we have to ensure that the school that is has a higher percentage of low income than the, than the next school is receiving more in allocation of Title One funding.
We receive less money this year, as, you know, every year we receive.
Tom, it's about the same. There might have been a $20,000 increase, I think.
It was a little higher.
Yeah. Last is the GHS music during the holiday season. So we see, this is mostly high school, the chorus and the dock spotters are going to be quite active. We missed December the ninth, the Middle Street Walk. Friday, December the 15th, at 7 o'clock, there's a holiday coffee house in the GHS cafeteria. And then on Tuesday, December the 19th, at 10 a.m., there's a special concert over at the Plum Cove Elementary School. The Cape Man Big Band, which hosts many GHS alumni, will also be presenting an annual holiday concert in the O'Malley Middle School Auditorium on Wednesday, December the 20th, at 6 o'clock. I haven't had a chance to hear them, it was a couple of years ago, when we heard the middle school jazz band play first, they were phenomenal. And then the Cape Man Big Band played as well, and they were also pretty good.
And I, and I think most, most elementary schools will be having some sort of-
Christmas.
Christmas event, yes, got to check. I've seen the schedule for that, but I'm assuming all the schools do. I think they're all out there. Is that it? Any questions, any further questions, superintendent? We have a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Action items, oh, committee reports. We have a program subcommittee, Chair Wilson, Nancy. Any action coming out of this?
We have no action on either item. Minutes will be forthcoming to, we had Principal Fusco there about therapy pets in schools, and we have some action items before we take it up at our next meeting.
Personnel Subcommittee?
Personnel Subcommittee met this week, last week, and we had three policies before us, the social networking policy, the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, and the amended staff ethics conflict of interest policy. The three policies we reviewed have been reviewed by our attorney, Naomi Stomberg. We actually approved two of them and are still working on the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy. We're sending some legal questions back for some direction. Those three policies will all come forward together to the school committee at a future date after the minutes have been released and with enough time for everyone to review them before we approve them.
We'll move on to action. We have two grants to accept. The first one is from Self Signaling Technologies in the amount of $3,750 to the elementary schools to enrich their science programs.
Second.
There we go. And Self Signaling is the company that's down in the old Kingsbury. And they, I believe we've gotten grants from them before, I think they were involved in the agriculture project at, at O'Malley. As I go on the ceremony, they were there. So they seem to be very good partners to Gloucester schools. Is there anything else on this, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. The second one is also from Self Signal and Technology in the amount of $5,014.77 to the Gloucester High School to enrich the science programs.
Second.
Is there anything, any discussion?
I'm just curious, it was written to Ms. Cafasso, speaking about a water purification system. Was this solicitation to local schools, was Ms. Cafasso, happened to know, do you know how she knew to contact Self Signaling for a water purification funding? I'm just curious. Perhaps she did.
Self Signaling, actually, if you go on their website, it's a very clear message that they want to help fund things that fall within their area of interest. So they are very active.
Has Ms. Cafasso reached out herself?
I don't know, I, I know her, when we, at the foundation, we definitely know that they are a source of, of support for projects that really have merit. So she probably is. support for projects that really have merit, so she probably is equally knowledgeable.
Yeah, well, I'm affiliated with an organization that just got a, a nice grant from them also, just go on her website.
Well, that'd be kudos to her, she, you know, and that's five thousand dollars for a cool system for the science department, good on her to seek out.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Um, MSBA update, we, um, as I said, we had a discussion with, um, Katie Loughler and it was in regard to, um, finalizing all the documentation for the, uh, moving into feasibility for the East Gloucester Vets, um, project. And that, um, also got voted, uh, the, the funding got voted last night. So now it's just a, a bit of paperwork, um, that has to be in by the end of the year, um, which will get us on the agenda for February, the board, the next board of directors meetings is, is February fourteenth. Um, and at that point, it is, um, our hope that we will be accepted into feasibility and, um, we will move forward. Um, we have conducted a couple more, um, site visits, uh, our last, uh, one, we, uh, Councillor Menhard and Councillor Gilman and Councillor Lundberg attended, um, we will probably try to do one more because there's still some members of, um, the building committee that haven't, um, been able to make it, done a con to any particular that she seems to have scheduled for support. And, and hasn't been able to get away, she's tried to do it, but had to cancel. So we'll, if anybody wants to, um, and we'll put that out, let everybody know that we put that out. Um, anything else on MSBA? We've got an upcoming meeting of, um, the, um, roof committee, and it will be, I assume, to close, pretty much close out that project. And as I said, I, I talked to Katie Loughler in the, in that same conversation about whether we could open up, um, the, uh, the, uh, West Parish, whether it was closed.
So you, SG, would have had to sign off on closing documents when the part was completely done, so I assume you haven't done that yet. So it should be an ability for discussion.
Uh, this is sort of, it was a sort of MSBA, so now that the roof of the high school is complete, what is the plan for repairing the track in the fieldhouse? Is that going to be an MSBA project, or is that something that's handled in-house only? Might I say now is there are cones nailed to the floor?
Yes, um, I have, um, had this discussion with the administration and basically told them that, um, there are fundraising avenues, um, but the city would have to come up with the plan. In other words, they, the city needs to say, this is what needs to be done, this is what it's going to cost. And, and then, um, I've talked to a number of people and there'd be some, um, there's a potential to, to do some, I don't know whether all, but at least partial funding through, through private donations.
That would be to GFAA?
Um, that's a little up in the air right now, there, there are a number of venues. Um, GFAA is, is kind of dormant, uh, these days, and I've talked to Dave Amiro, who's the president, and, uh, he's willing to schedule a meeting and have me come talk to him about it, but I can hopefully get some information. It's, you know, to know what we're asking for. I mean, if it's going to be a million dollars or seven hundred thousand dollars or, um, uh, I did talk to Mr. Hayfield about that as well as, um, Mr. Distino, and, um, he threw some numbers out, and I, he, he, it, there was no backup on, on what he was talking about. So we would like to get something a little more solid, um, before we go asking people for money about what we're asking them to go on.
Is there any sense of, um, urgency around trying to get some solid numbers, so that maybe any project would have to happen over a summer?
Correct.
Summer's coming.
Summer's coming. We hope.
Uh, anyway, so I, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I will, I will push that again. Um, I think maybe a conversation with Mr. Hale might be the, the, the next place to go. Anything else, any other questions?
Any committee member of one of the four go to print the budget book?
I can actually give you about three binders back, too, if you'd like.
So three?
I don't, yeah, I know, I like it.
Should I do it at all? I asked who doesn't want one?
Who doesn't?
Four, four guys and do not want it. Correct.
Yes.
I do not want a paper binder.
No, I don't want a paper binder.
Sorry, I'm not being paid.
Well, I mean, we do have to make them, because we do have to put them in the, the lives are available, provided to do it.
So it's four that don't?
So Tony's the only one that does.
Tony likes to write, he's used to it.
And I use little tabs.
I've seen it.
And I give Tony, so Tony has to have one.
I know, why do you do?
All right. New business, ask Kathy.
Uh, I know the subject of, um, I tried to bring up the subject of gate fees for students or youth at our BNF, um, and I was hoping maybe we could refer that to the lean finance subcommittee for evaluation.
Okay, so we were talking, the, the issue was, um, providing, uh, free, free, um, admission to children that come with a paying adult, more or less.
More or less, yeah.
Got it? Without Jackie.
Wait, what is it?
But it was also jerseys.
Yeah, there was something about jerseys, but.
They came wearing a jersey, they did.
Well, there was, there was a, there was a request from the AD that we, um, consider, um, allowing, um, uh, free admission for, for children accompanied by adults, and there was something about jerseys for that. I mean, what, what we're talking about is talking about it, being that referring it to the issue of, of, uh, making some admission.
The general topic.
General topic.
Children's fees.
Okay. Anything else, is there other new business? Uh, there's no executive session, um.
Want to do a jar?
You can grab my money.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and have a happy new year.